As much order as we can.
Okay.
Any announcements, open session, a public comment? I've got an announcement if nobody else does.
Okay.
I haven't physically met the new building inspector.
Yeah.
But the building inspector did have a question on zoning. And someone in the building office suggested that they call the chairman of the planning board. So we did have a discussion and he was very happy. He called me. It was a question on cluster zoning stuff and I told him in the future, don't hesitate. If he's got any problems on zoning, give me a call.
And now he has your number because I gave it to you.
Did you get, did you give him the mobile number?
I did. Yes. Sorry.
No, that's okay. There were some-
I mean, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. There's some people that should have that mobile number. I think it's probably anyway, but anyway, that's the only thing. I did meet him and I told him I would get in there. I guess he came from...
Dennis.
Dennis. It is Dennis.
Okay.
That is where Courtney is going.
Oh, she's got a destination. All right. Yeah, cool.
She does. Yep.
Can you share his name?
Yeah, what is his name?
Paul. Uh, I can give you his last name. Give me one second.
Yeah. Alfred, have you met him?
Uh, how do you think he found you? I wasn't, I wasn't quite clear on the, um, the question he had on the, uh, the cluster. So I thought the person who created it and used it should be the one to explain it to him.
That's a wise call. Yeah.
Well, I didn't create it because it was created before I got on the planning board. And I wasn't on the planning board when they changed the setbacks. So I really had nothing to do with it except be the only one to ever use it.
Yeah. Well, that's good. I would hope I'd be the only one to use the adult entertainment bylaw, but we're getting there.
Okay. Oh, I got the message. All he says was Paul and I'm trying to, I, I don't know what-
I'm on it, David.
Yeah.
You're on it?
He seemed to, he seemed to be a nice gentleman, um, when I met him and he, uh, he, you know, the questions he asked and I asked him were all decent building department questions. So I, I, I had a pretty good feeling.
Okay. What I did get from him, and I was actually hoping, since we're under announcement, I was hoping that the individual that was hired had some zoning experience.
I'll learn.
And Paul admitted that basically he had a town planner to go to. And Dennis, full-time, very good, was there for almost 20-plus years.
Yeah.
So-
Unfortunately, Jerry, that's often the case is inspectors do not like to do zoning at all, you know, which is more often than not, they don't like it and they don't understand it, which is difficult. But that's consistent throughout the Cape.
Yeah, and then most of them are coming, it seems, David, that most of them are coming from larger towns. And the larger towns, yes, are spending the money because they have a lot more-
For designating-
Commercial stuff to develop for a town planner.
Yep. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Um, first on the agenda, affordable dwelling units and affordable accessory dwelling units. ADUs and AAdu's.
Nomination.
I'm sorry?
Member to be nominated for the 95 Lawrence-
Oh, I got, that's right. I got the, uh, I got the old. Yes. Andy Freeman was the appointed liaison to the 95 Lawrence Street Affordable Housing Project. Um, since Andy left, I got a email from Elaine McElroy requesting that I get someone else to replace Andrew. I will open it up to vote if somebody wants to make a motion, but I will let somebody know. I've tentatively checked with someone that I feel I'd like to see it, which is David Rau, because as a past building inspector, as someone that's been on the planning board before, is, is accustomed to our zoning, has lived in Wellfleet all his life. And I think would bring the necessary overall information to that 95 Lawrence Street as far as making sure it got built correctly, good layout, whatever input we could do. So I have talked to David and he said he would do it. But if anybody else wants to, go ahead, David.
I'll verify that. Yeah, I'll do it. You know, I'll gladly do it. Certainly.
If, is there anybody else that would be interested in it?
I'm interested in this and I have worked on large affordable housing projects.
Okay.
I'd love to know, uh, of the two of you, Jerry?
Yes, go ahead, David.
I just want to say of the two of you, who can promise, signed in blood, for example, that the, um, 95 Lawrence Road project will be a green affordable housing project? You say yes, you have my vote.
I would say I would, I would say no to that.
Why?
Because I don't think green is a very questionable term and the green buildings I've seen are both extremely expensive and somewhat dysfunctional. And I think we've seen that in our own community. Some of the houses that were built are dysfunctional and technically failed. So I wouldn't hang my hat on it that it has to be green. It has to be cost-effective, yes. But to label the term green, no.
David, I'm just using a short- I think there's massive evidence that buildings that are well-built, very energy-efficient, are all-electric, are reducing their carbon footprint, and they actually, they cost a little bit more to build. There's a lot of data on this. They cost a little more to build, which is more than made up through, um, savings on utilities over time.
Well, I fundamentally disagree with that, so-
No, I hear you. I'm just telling you what-
Yeah, yeah.
I'm telling you how I see it.
That's fine. That's how you feel. I get it, but I disagree. That's all.
Yeah, I got it. Anyway, that's not really our topic, I realize, but it's relevant.
It, well, it, it does go to the topic. It's, it's a matter of, let's face it, it is affordable housing.
Yep.
We've seen it with Habitat. We've seen it with, um, what I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying, where I'm trying to go with David's experience, and that's nothing against Olga at all. It's, it's a matter of, we have seen affordable housing projects in, in Wellfleet, a number of them go by the wayside uh, for ill-planning to even start with on bad lots. We've seen the housing authority, because it's free, take lots that really should not have gone to affordable housing because they have taken a tremendous amount of money for infrastructure just to get to the property. We have seen Habitat work with, um, Photovoltaic. With, with them working as individuals on, on the house. So Habitat has worked. It, it's certainly not, I think, when I think green, David Mead, I think of, you know, really another different level. Uh, you can build wisely, but with affordable, most of the time, that just doesn't enter the equation.
Well, I, Jerry, I understand that's how it's been historically. I think what my view would be is that we are entering a new day on this. We have to change the way we think about these things. I'm not suggesting that something be done that is super expensive or that is going to be a failed building. Of course, no one wants either of those things. But there is lots of data, there's lots of evidence that this can actually be done. I don't mean over the top. I don't mean something that is, you know, net zero, zero kind of a building, but something that is, that is, has a very low carbon footprint, can use local renewable energy and is, um, highly insulated. We do, we already have a stretch code in Wellfleet, and whether anybody likes it or not, there's going to be an even stronger stretch code. Give it a couple of years from the state, it's going to happen. Uh, and so this is the way things are going, and I know it can feel like it's on the cutting edge or something, but it actually is not really. I'm not, I'm not, this is nothing against anybody's experience here in Wellfleet, but this is a, not a new idea, and this is, this notion of, of super buildings, you can call them whatever you want. I was using green as their shorthand, not to put up a red flag, which it sounds like they did. But there's a lot that can be done with these affordable and otherwise, but for sure with affordable. I can send everybody evidence, studies, reports, tons of information. Elaine McElroy is on the, the, in the meeting, and I wouldn't mind if she weighed in, for example, but that's-
She just raised her hand, so if you want to recognize her when you're done, you can.
Okay. Elaine?
Uh, thank you. I do want to say that it is the town administrator's job to appoint someone. So both people that are interested could let her know that. At this point, we do have a request for proposal ready to go out that's been approved by the select board that does include energy efficiency, components. The one thing we're waiting for is the wastewater, language, as the, as the town has decided they want to look at an expanded wastewater system for 95 Lawrence Road. The work of the task force at this point will be to evaluate proposals when they come in, in the spring. We, we certainly won't make any major changes since the selectmen did approve the RFP that we do have. But it is, it is the, um, town administrator's job to appoint someone. So we were looking for expressions of interest. And, you know, I think at this point, we really need someone to support the, all the, the year of work that's gone into the RFP. And, you know, we certainly want the proposals to be really well-vetted. So it sounds like both people have skills that, that would work towards that. But I do want to say it will be the town administrator that makes the ultimate decision.
So the RFP has gone out?
No, the RFP will go out in March. We missed, we missed the, the funding round. And, um, because of the decision, we had, you know, we did get a grant to study wastewater solutions. And, um, the report that has come back, which reviewed an innovative alternative system, a small wastewater system just for the housing development, or a larger system of components that would serve both the housing, the municipal buildings in that area, and a third component of a butter's was what was decided by the select board that would be the ultimate option because of the opportunity to then help mitigate the Duck Creek watershed. So we had to wait for that decision to be made to put out the RFP too. So the RFP in total, except for the language for the wastewater, um, portion, has been approved by the select board. But, but because the funding rounds go in a cycle, there's no point in issuing it, issuing it now. It will be issued, uh, in the beginning of March.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes, David.
Uh, I don't want to be a, drag this on, so if it's the town administrator's responsibility to appoint, I would gladly just forward both Hel, uh, Olga's name and my name and let her decide, and that's fine with me. Um, because I'd like to carry on with what we're supposed to be doing on the rest of the meeting. I don't want this to be bone of contention or a big cause for fuss because I don't think it need be.
No, I, I think that's where I was going. Uh, and if there's nobody else, my suggestion is we just take these two names and, and pass them off to the TA.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. If, you know, I'm fine with either one. So that's, that's, I think that important is get somebody in that role, and she has two to pick from and take it from there.
I will send that to her tomorrow.
All right, anybody else?
Cool.
If not, okay, Rebecca, you'll send that up to TA tomorrow? Great.
Yeah, she's currently, um, working from home under quarantine, but I will absolutely send that to her.
She's under quarantine?
Yes, she unfortunately went to New York for the last four days, and that is a restricted state, so she was told she had to quarantine.
Okay.
Is that because she's a Jets fan secretly?
Yep.
That's what I thought.
All right. Uh, moving on. I, my agenda says affordable dwelling units and ADUs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good. All right. Um, it's general discussion. I think, let me check. I had asked as part of this discussion, and I didn't, I've been having a hard time copying stuff on my own. Rebecca, uh, did you send out Mike Travato's list of current AAdu?
Yes, I did. Yep, and he, um, just texted me a little while ago and sent his apologies that he couldn't make tonight's meeting, but yes, I sent, I forwarded it. And if anyone needs, I can screen share it right now for you, so you can look at it.
Well, has everybody got a copy?
No.
I don't. I can look at it. Yeah, at some point, yeah. Yeah.
Hang on one second. I'll just screen share it so you guys can have a quick look at it.
How many names are on it?
There are nine, basically, there are nine units, Alfred. Of those nine units, three of them are in the apartment building on Holbrook Avenue that did not go for AAdu, but were granted that status. Was granted that status.
Well, you're, you're automatically granted the status if you stay at the rate, at the affordable rate, rate.
Right, but they had, they were not in the number of originally the Board of Appeals-
Counted.
The Board of Appeals had granted approximately over the years, to best of my knowledge, and maybe you, you've got a better handle on it than I do, Alfred. I think it was somewhere around 15 or 16 units that had gone before the Board of Appeals for a special permit to build or to convert a garage or something to AAdu. Of those 15 or 16 units, and I guess Rebecca, is this what you have from, from Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all?
This is what I have. This is what he sent me. This is the only thing he sent me.
Oh, okay. What, all right. And we did discuss this. He felt, to answer your question directly, Alfred, he felt that sending the list that he had, he was uncomfortable. So-
Why?
I, I, David, I don't, I don't know. All I know is this is what he sent, and it jogged my memory to why, because he felt he, he wasn't in a position to want to send that over to us. However, I had my eyes on it. So consequently, that's how I know there are nine units, of which three are in one multiple dwelling that didn't go before this, didn't have to go before the Board of Appeals for a special permit. Rather than giving a blunder. Alfred, am I somewhat close to that number, as you remember, that have gone to the Board of Appeals for, um, a special permit of around 15 to 16?
Jerry, I think that's correct. The problem is, the reason I don't think the list came out is nobody knows what anybody's done with any of this stuff.
Yeah.
Our last, our last town administrator aborted most of it by not knowing what to do. And through him and the assistant town administrator, they told people that they were going to get tax breaks at different periods, and then they didn't show up. I mean, somebody needs to sit down and explain how this system works. Because the last two people in charge of it were clueless.
And I think he's still, he's still trying to look through it. I suggested he call town council, but as it stands now, so everybody, when we're discussing this issue, I wanted upfront to know, because I've, I've got some, and I'll be the first one to say it, I got some major concerns with, with ADU and, and AAdu. But as it stands now, seeing that list out of the 15 or 16 people that have been approved by special permit from the Board of Appeals for an AAdu, there currently is only six units of those 15 or 16 that are on file according to the assistant TA that are legally registered as current AAdu units.
I think that explains why Mike didn't want to send the list out.
Could, we have some people raised their hands. I don't know if you can see, Jerry?
I can see it now. Yes, okay.
Yeah, um, because the, what you just said is contradicts what Sharon, the, the memo that Sharon sent. And so I would love it if we could hear from her, because she says there's currently 12 and that Mike Travato says he doesn't, uh, he doesn't think that the concerns merit the need for a new bylaw, but I'd like to hear from Sharon if possible.
Hi. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that number that I have in my paper is 12. I thought it was nine also, but Gary corrected me, so that's, I wish Mike was here. Wouldn't make it a lot easier, but, um, but-
Jerry?
My understanding was that he said-
Gary?
Oh, Gary Sorkin. Gary Sorkin.
Oh, Gary. Okay.
Because, so we were, we had a meeting with Mike, a Zoom meeting, and it was Mike, Gary Sorkin, Elaine, Olga, and myself. And, um, I thought that he had said he had nine, but Gary thought he'd said he had 12 because one of them was three units, as you said. In any case, it was more than six, so that was good. He also felt like, I mean, it sounds to me, Alfred, I, I totally hear what you're saying.
Let me, let me ask you this. I'd like to interrupt you for half a second. Did you see the list?
No. No, I did not.
I would like to respond to that. That there's a, there are issues of confidentiality about who lives there. And that's what I understand is why they don't publicly show that.
I would agree with that.
Well, the only reason I was asking is because I have two of them, one by special permit and one by the other, and I haven't received a tax break in two years. And I think the whole system is screwed up beyond control, and I'm going to stop my discussion at that point. But at one point, I actually went through the mechanism and with the last assistant town administrator, because supposedly the paperwork didn't meet the timelines, I lost the first part for my tax break. I was going to get it in the second part, and then they didn't credit me the second part. And I'm not the only one who got screwed.
Okay, so can I speak to that?
Yes.
I mean, I, I think that, um, there's general agreement that there's a problem when we change assistant town administrators. Um, and my, my impression is from Mike is that he's much more like previous town administrators where he's, let's, well, let's work this out rather than no. Um, so I don't know if you, have you spoken with him, Alfred, about re-?
I did.
You did?
I spoke to him multiple times, and it was expensive $1,800 out of my pocket.
Oh, okay. That's with Mike Travato?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't know.
You're not going to get that retroactive, right?
No, that's why I am opposed to- I'm opposed to anything the town does if they're not going to, once they tell somebody to do something or suggest it, um, you know, I don't know who, I don't know who you deal with in the town hall who understands the program.
Well, okay, I thought that problem had been resolved, and apparently it hasn't been. So, um,
No, the problem, the problem has not been resolved, uh, number one. Number two, there is only six special permitted AD, AAdu's on record being used in Mike's office at the present time. The additional three is an apartment building that was pre-existing, that did not have to go for a special permit for AAdu.
Okay.
So we can talk different numbers, but it's, it's basically what I'm trying to get across is of the 15 or 16 that the Board of Appeals has issued special permits for now is down to six. And that is of, as of last Thursday, looking at what was on his desk that he showed me. I'm not giving names on anything else. I'm just saying that we have almost two-thirds of the individuals that got permits that have fallen by the wayside for some reason, whether it's a town of Wellfleet's mistake, whether it's the TA, assistant TA, whomever. But as it stands right now, there are two-thirds of those units in limbo. So when we get in, where, in a minute, where I'm trying to go with this discussion with all the planning board members, as well as, as you were advocating, is that in this discussion going on, whatever we do, it seems that we have to make this cleaner, clearer, and easier because it just doesn't seem to be working as well as it should be at the present time.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
So I wanted to start on that premise. So in discussing AAdu's, ADu's, we all had at least a similar idea of what has happened and what's going on at the present time. So with that, I'll, is, is any member that wants to even start this, or we want to hear from?
Well, it seems to me that, that Jerry, that we'd need to know what became of those 10 units before we did anything. Are they abandoned? Are they being used to their special permit status? Or are they being rented freewheeling at market rates? I mean, we need to know what's going on with those, not, and that's a matter of public record. There's no confidentiality here because it's a special permit. So we know the property owners, so it can be found out, and that would be incumbent on our zoning enforcement officer to find that out, which we haven't had one for several years, either Justin or Richard. So we haven't had any follow-up for that for years, and that's part of the reason why this is such an- So we haven't had any follow-up for that for years and that's part of the reason why this is such an effeminate.
Well, I gotta, I gotta agree, I gotta agree with you, but, and I concur with you. And I guess maybe I've been all around so long that I, whatever we do, whatever discussions are going to come up, I think the problem stands. And this basically is straight from the horse's mouth of the powers that be that are in, in Wellfleet, running Wellfleet at the present time. When we passed the AADU, we had hoped that the illegal apartments in the town of Wellfleet would come out of the woodwork, see the advantage. We wouldn't have to get.
We wouldn't have to play a big stick.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't have to play with a big stick and we were hopeful that it proceed down that line to clean up some problems. It has not cleaned up, it has not cleaned up a single problem.
I think that died with Rex, yeah.
Well, it never even, with all due respect, it never even started with Rex because nobody going all the way back to Rex
Yeah.
wanted, and the unwritten rule in this town right now is if you've got somebody in an affordable position living in a unit, whether that unit is legal, illegal, unsatisfactory, whatever, we're not kicking or looking to kick those people out. So to answer the question, what happened to the other ten units that are AADU? The town is looking the other way, doesn't want to know, doesn't care, we're not kicking them out. What's happened to all those units that were supposed to get cleaned up when the AADU went in? We don't know, we don't care, we're not looking into it.
I'm not suggesting kicking them out, yeah.
So consequently, it's, we're turning, and I understand in one side of this con- consideration is we need affordable housing. But when we as zoning, as individuals on the planning board, listen to individuals that want to change zoning and we think about changing zoning, we've always looked at it with, okay, if we pass a bylaw, it needs to be enforced. How else do we get anywhere? And if we're going to now all of a sudden even think about ADUs, either by right or by special permit, and we're not even going to begin to clean up the mess that already exists with with illegal units, what kind of problems are we correcting? And I think that's part of what we, and I'm looking at and looking at the boards to say, okay, when you start talking about this, understand that what we do and what's out there, the rules probably aren't going to change.
Yeah. Well, Jerry, what I'd like to find out from them, those ten units that are no longer participating is not to kick them out or see what, I'd like to find out why they're not participating. Is it the cumbersome paperwork like Alfred experienced? Because if that's the case, then that's the problem. But what is their reluctance or their inability to participate? Is it cumbersome for them? Are they not making enough money? Is the tax advantage not good? I mean, I want feedback from them. I don't want to discourage them. I just want to know why they're out now. Why had they decided to, did they sell or what happened, you know? It's more of a curiosity rather than a, an enforcement issue. But we should be able to reach out and go, well, are you using it? And if, if not so, why, you know, because we might want to modify it to make it more enticing. You know, maybe there's not enough carrots out there for them.
Yeah.
There's one other thing, um, that you, you need to note, um, when people decided to get, some of the people decided not to continue to do these, all right? And when they went to the building inspector and told them that they weren't doing them, the building inspector said the only way you could get out is go back to the zoning, to the appeals board. And I disagreed with that, and I mean, because if you have a special permit and you let it lapse by not using it.
It's abandoned.
It's an abandoned thing, but for some reason our past building inspector could not get that theory.
Justin didn't understand zoning. He's an idiot.
Well, David, that's not the point. The point is some people were trying to do the right thing.
Yeah.
And when they went and asked for help, I don't think the town at all explained to them, unless I'm incorrect, but I always believed a special permit, once it was abandoned, evaporated.
Two years and it lapses. Two years and it lapses. If you don't exercise it, it lapses by matter of statute.
Okay.
Bonnie has a question and then Sharon has a question.
Yeah, I got it. Sharon, first?
Um, I, I'm, so I'm, I'm unclear. If you have a special permit and you let, I mean, my understanding was always that if you weren't doing it, then you were going to be required to take the stove out. Is that?
Correct, correct. Yes, yes.
Well, there's, there's two things. Yes, if you weren't using it, we go back to the due process. And David Rawl can correct me with his experience if I make a mistake here. But to answer your question, Sharon, the due process was when we set the AADU up. If you change your mind for any reason and decide you do not want to rent that unit under the auspices of affordability, you had no other alternative because you couldn't rent it other than that way. So therefore, your number of bedrooms had already been protected by Board of Health. So you met your Title V regulations. You just couldn't rent it. So therefore, enforcement, one hand, who was overseeing the administration of the AADU program, should have contacted the building inspector to say this individual is no longer involved. Go out and have the kitchen stove taken out. Now to Alfred's point, which is a very valid point. If the building inspector didn't do that and that individual in theory did not rejoin the following year into the AADU program, once two years go by, that special permit is now voided and theoretically it cannot be used. And again, the building inspector should be the enforcing agent. But I can't speak to what Justin did without Justin in front of us. But I believe in theory, the way it was happening, the powers that be, TAs, Assistant TAs, who had the authority in town, probably gave permission or gave instructions to the building inspector, do not enforce because now you're kicking another family that might have been in there out and we do not want to go there. So you cannot blame it probably on all on the building inspector because I know there was in fact, and still is in fact, this umbrella from the individuals within town hall, whether it's selectmen oriented or whomever, I do know and do not know, but it, it was, we're not going there.
So is this a conversation we need to have with like the town administrator, the building inspector, someone from the planning board? I mean,
I, I think, I think it, I don't know if it's in, Sharon, I think it's, it's a matter of, I'm introducing all of this for the simple reason that as we proceed with these discussions, and I want to get to the discussion of the need, but we have this ongoing problem. And are we going to compound it? Are we going to look the other way, pass new zoning and expect now they're going to enforce it? I don't have an answer to that question, but I don't think the town of Wellfleet wants to see any of those units, whether they're illegal units or whether they were legal and are still, are now illegal. And it goes, what they're going to do, and this goes quite honestly, and I've had a discussion with Mike on this, and I want members' opinion, but this goes to my feelings, why I'm really have a hard time because if I have, if I've seen that, or I am, I am seeing that enforcement is not going to, is not there and not going to be there. And we then go and say, all right, you've got an ADU, even if we make it by special permit. And people, and we put in there that they've got to rent on a year-round basis and they do it for the first year and then all of a sudden it goes by the wayside. Now we have to enforce, well, if we haven't been enforcing the bylaws that we have, what makes?
Why make new ones?
Right out of my mouth, and David's right, is why make additional ones that are going to lead to more and more problems. Now, Sharon, I got that. I need to, I need to go to Bonnie because she's got her hand up.
Sure.
Yes, Bonnie?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I mean, I guess this is kind of a question because it strikes me that where the, the situation you're describing is, is more of a management, more of a management issue and not necessarily something that needs to come before the planning board. Because unless, unless there is in, I mean, so my kind of train of thought is if we, if we answer David's questions about what has happened, you know, to the people who dropped out and what were the reasons? You know, then we will know whether the reasons are something that can be
Corrected, yeah.
fixed by, by an adjustment to the bylaw. So that's one thing. But otherwise, it sounds like there's a, a kind of a whole management issue that is maybe not, we don't, maybe the planning board doesn't need to be involved, but whereas the, an ADU bylaw, which would be something, you know, building on this, but different and much less with many fewer requirements and restrictions. You know, that is something that the planning board needs to be discussed. So I just, I guess I, Jerry, I just want to ask you if my understanding of, you know, what the crux of our discussion needs to be, because I don't think that the planning board needs, I mean, we need to be aware of the management issues, but that's really a question for the town leaders and the select board. Yeah, and I, I don't know if everybody sees that Beth has had her hand up for a long time.
No, I can't see Beth.
You can't?
You don't have, Sharon, you don't see all of us on your screen?
No.
Pull your corner of.
Yeah, here I go. Now I got you. Pull my corner out?
Hi, Jerry, yeah, enlarge it if you pull the corner down. So this is a new discussion for me in Wellfleet. But my experience in Provincetown and Truro with some affordable housing issues
Yes.
leads me to the, to know that these are complicated issues. And they might be much more personally complicated than we as a planning board have any inkling about. So, um, towns often don't want to interfere because you will have displaced people with no alternative housing. They become homeless if you shut them out. And so if you look at those two, you weigh those two possibilities, making this legal and keeping these people housed, towns often say, leave it alone to protect the people that are in those dwellings. Now, I don't know if that's the case here or not because I don't know any of the specifics. I just know that that's often why the problem exists. It's protecting.
And I think, Beth, you absolutely nailed it.
Yeah, I think that's exactly, and Wellfleet too. That's verbatim, verbatim, yeah, you know.
I think as with that on the table, my concern, and I want to get more into the housing aspect of it, but my concern and the reason why I'm doing this, I'll come back to it again, to Beth's point. Once you open the door.
You can't close it.
You cannot close it and we may need the best possible method and follow other towns and say, okay, we're going to open up ADUs. But in so doing, keep in mind what Beth just said and the fact that we have all of these problems. And I think those problems, quite honestly, are going to grow as we increase housing, which we need, but increase housing in Wellfleet through the ADU situation. Sharon, I see it.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
A quick question. The, the, I, I don't want to put people out on the street either and I understand the enforcement is, is challenging and complicated. But do we know are any of those missing AADUs, have they been converted to Airbnb?
Well, that's what I want to find out, Sharon. That's it. Because that's a valid question. Why did they leave? Did they go, I ain't making any money with this, but I can make a pile on B and B, you know, Airbnb? And I don't know, maybe they all kept them. I don't know and just didn't file the paperwork. But that's possible too.
Sharon, I don't mean to laugh. I'm sorry. Sharon, but you said something out loud that really just hit me between the eyes. And you said it before when I was thinking about it. Wellfleet, Wellfleet is being, has seen a tremendous influx in BMBs and AirBMBs and everything else. And one of the things I'm sure that, that is one issue that's happening with some of those, maybe only a few, but I'm sure there's a couple of them that you now have separate buildings with bathrooms and kitchens for those ten units. And I'm sure they're being rented, might not be rented on a, on a weekly basis, but might be rented on a nightly basis. And one of the things, it came to light because I know a lot of motel owners and a lot of motel owners have complained to me and said, Jerry, we're not staying full. Yeah, COVID's one thing, but we weren't staying full last year, the year before because BMBs have come into Wellfleet and there's nobody looking over anybody's shoulder and consequently, they would rather go to a single-family dwelling in somebody else's apartment over their garage and, and be more comfortable and bring their family than come to rent two motel rooms.
Yeah, bring, bring the dog and, yeah, all this thing, yeah.
What concerns me with the ADU is you get the special permit, you get somebody rented on a year-round basis, sign a lease, and they say, okay, fine, and they turn around and rent it as Airbnb.
Yeah, nothing's stopping you from doing it.
It comes back to the same thing and I, I know Bonnie looked at it. Yes, Bonnie, management of the enforcing aspect of all of this is not the planning board. We don't go out and do it as planning board. But when we pass zoning bylaws, if we know there's a management problem or a management, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, decision, as Beth said, management may have looked at this and said, you know, we don't want to put anybody on the street. Are we going to continue to compound it?
Yeah, don't give them the ammunition, you know.
I've done some talking here and I don't want to, I want to, I want to open this up to some members to, to say, okay, with all this information, where are we going, guys?
So I, I, I want to make a difference between what you and Beth are saying about not wanting to kick people out and the fact that the main enforcement problem is converting a year-round accessory dwelling to a A, a year round accessory dwelling to an Airbnb. And, and, and so I'm sure that the town would have no compunction about enforcing. The year round requirement. You know, because that is, you know, converting something to an Airbnb is exactly what makes people homeless. So, I, I'd like to separate the two, those two enforcement questions, cuz maybe you're. Maybe what you're not enforcing is the paperwork requirements, or the income requirements, or the building inspection requirements.
All of the above.
Matters for availability of rental housing is making sure these don't get converted to Airbnb's.
Yeah, but how, how can you guarantee that something stays year round occupancy? You can't.
You can't.
Whether they come after three weeks, how is that different from an Airbnb? They intended to stay, but things happen and they move out. You can't mandate, you can incentivize. The owners for having year round residence, but you can't really enforce mandate that they have year round.
You, you can check and make sure they're not advertising.
Well, yes.
That's enforcement though, and there again, we haven't had that in years. So, that's why we're left unknown how, where those ten units went. Nothing's been stated in ten years, follow up hasn't been done. And it's, you know, we gotta find out one way or another, why they left and what they're doing. Simple as that. Yeah, what we've got now, I mean, that's an inquiry from the building commissioner, and it's not an aggressive thing. It just says, hey, you were listed under special permit. You know, you haven't registered, would you like to re-register, or would you like to drop out? End of story. I mean, that's it.
Okay.
Get some feedback from these people. I mean, that doesn't really put him on the spot, but it gets him involved and made him aware of some of the issues. You know, cuz I don't wanna.
What are the feelings from some of the members?
I don't know if you can see David.
I can't see David.
Nobody can see me. I'm, I'm the invisible man.
No, I think he's talking David Mead. Is he got his hand up?
Yes, he has his hand up.
Bonnie, Rebecca, you've got a, since I can't see these, if you've got somebody that's got a hand up, you've got to, please tell me.
Do you not see everyone on the?
No, the only ones I see is Beth.
Oh, the ones that are talking?
Yes.
Okay, so you need to go up to the right hand corner and you wanna hit, um, you wanna hit gallery, gallery view.
Uh, where am I going?
Probably, so go to the right hand corner at the top of the screen. It, yours probably says speaker view. If you hit that. It'll go automatically to gallery view and you'll be able to see everyone talking.
You see all the little box next to you? Click on that.
So is that like Hollywood Squares?
Yes, so now we look like we're on Hollywood Squares.
Alright, so you want me to go, you want me to go to gallery?
Yes, go to gallery view, and then you'll be able to see everyone kinda waving at you. I didn't realize you couldn't see that, otherwise I would have.
Well, no, I can. Thank you a lot. David Mead, Fox.
So, I feel like we're going around in circles. I'd like to talk about going forward. We've identified the problem. I think David Rawls' point about getting data on the people that dropped out makes complete sense that we should do that. That's the only action item I see so far. I do wonder that I'm pretty darn sure that this is not. An issue that's unique to Wellfleet. And I wonder to what extent somebody on this call, or if not, we could find out, has identified. How other towns have dealt with this very same issue. Gotta be pretty much exactly the same. The bylaws are different, but the issues, the, the market, uh. Issues, the Airbnb, all that is not wanting to throw people out, that's all shared stuff. And I would hope that somehow we can not, you know, I've had enough of talking about what's not working. Let's talk about what we can do to make it work, and maybe other towns have some solutions we could. At least piggyback on and adapt to our own situation.
But I, I think Beth has identified it pretty clear in P-Town and Truro, and I think that's largely how other towns deal with it, is turn a blind eye.
Well, but that's, but that's my question. If turning a blind eye is the solution.
Blind eye, they condoned it. They watched it. They paid attention to it, but they, they didn't enforce it. That's different than a blind eye.
So what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at here is do we, does the board think? I understand what a couple of board members think, but does the board think, I'd love to just go around and think that we all, we all agree on the problems. But does the board think this is hopeless? Nothing will work. That's kind of what I'm getting. And I can understand why somebody would say that, but is that what our stance is gonna be? Nothing's gonna work. It's a mess. It's bad. And we walk away.
David, do you have towns that you would want me to reach out and ask about it? Surrounding towns like Orleans, Brewster, Truro, cuz I can email their.
I have not looked into this at all. I'm just wondering if, uh, if anybody on this call has, or if we could get some more information about other.
I can do that. I can email surrounding towns and find out about how their ADUs and EDUs work if you want.
Before you go there, Rebecca, I got a, I got a feeling that what we're talking about here, and, and I do wanna get off that, but what we're talking about. Is really an un, unwritten consensus among management. To Beth's point, is we know the problem, but we don't go there, and they're not gonna issue any letters saying we turn a deaf ear. They're not gonna put that in writing. It's something internal they have to work with. So, I, I think, I think. We need to, I need, I need to hear, and board members need to hear from other members of the board. I mean, we haven't even. Dived into septic, we haven't even dived into lot coverage. We haven't dived into a lot of that kinda stuff yet, but. Where, where the board members are thinking about the ADU aspect of a, creating a new. Bylaw. Beth, did you have a hand up on that as, aspect?
Just gonna say, could we review the existing bylaws? And as if we, and, and, and consider whether or not changes to them make sense? Because that's really our only mandate of the bylaws. Enforcement and all that is not planning board. So if we write a better bylaw, then we can do that. Otherwise, it seems to me, we're done.
On the ADU?
Yes.
Right, well, I think. I think the ADU. Is in essence, a separate entity as to what. The affordable housing individuals, Elaine and Olga and Bonnie and. Sharon are looking at. I think. And I will never put words in their mouths, but I'm thinking they're looking at, okay, you've got an ADU, Wellfleet, on, on, on the books. We've gotta deal with that. I think they're looking at, alright, other towns have passed an ADU. And I think that's basically where they've come to the planning board. And certain planning members have looked at it and said, alright, let's delve into the ADU aspect. And is this a good fit? For Wellfleet? And now that I. Words in, in Elaine's mouth or, or Sharon's mouth?
That seems to be a good fit for the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah.
I get a nod, I get a nod from both of them, and I get a nod from members. So, at this point, we know we have a problem with ADUs. We know we have a problem with enforcing. We don't know whether management's taking care of that aspect of it. It's on our mind for whatever we pass, but I think at this point, I would love to come back to. What are the board members? Feelings, cuz I, I think. You've got in your packet. The other towns that have passed it, and how many units have been passed. And we're not talking about a lot of units here. From what I can see from some of these, some of these graphs. Wellfleet actually was more.
The numbers anywhere.
Well, there was numbers on the. You don't have.
Results, results, yes, sorry.
You have it, and, and Wellfleet. At least when the AD, ADU was in full force and. The paperwork was being done simply and correctly with racks, we had fifteen, sixteen units going full tilt. None of these towns even come close to that. With the ADU. So, let's hear from some members on the planning board, and I'll certainly keep my eyes on Sharon and, and Elaine. As to, okay, what are the, what are the feelings from the membership? On the planning board on the ADUs? And should they be considered? Uh, should they have a lot cap? Should they? Be a special permit? Should it be by right? Um, those are kinda the discussions I wanna get into, folks, members. Okay, the first one I start with David Mead.
Jerry, um, I'm looking at this material and I see here that, um. That Sharon, you're asking for the opportunity to present a potential draft of an, I, I assume a new ADU bylaw, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's one thing that we could say yes to. Let's take a look at that, right?
Well, we don't have, do we have that draft?
No, we're hoping to present it at your next meeting.
Let's move forward and do that.
No, I was looking, okay, I, I got yours, David Mead. Sharon, do we have that?
No, we're hoping to present it at your next meeting.
Okay. So, without that present, we can't really talk about what's in the draft.
Right.
But we can talk about. And it may be premature, but I, I'd still, I'd like to get some feelings and some facts out on. The feelings of the board members on ADUs. And it might even help, hopefully it will help Sharon in the draft, to see where some of the members are going.
Well, Jerry, you know that even with an ADU, an unregulated, unchecked ADU, we already are pretty much overdeveloped in Wellfleet. Now, most of the lots, sixty percent of them are half acre lots. Now, although they have a legal Title V, that does not mean that they are remotely compliant to Title V regulations. Because none of them are. They don't meet the design standard. What was installed is maximum feasible compliance. Which means we're already kinda maxed out on a half acre lot that has six bedrooms, which should only have two. And now we wanna increase the intensity on that by right. So I'm not really thrilled on an ADU bylaw. I'm more interested in going to the ADU and seeing where we could go with that. Cuz I think it's gonna be a nightmare to do an ADU for both water and wastewater.
Oh, okay, um, if anybody's, I, I, I see a, a look on, on, um. Bonnie's face, where, where David was going is a lot of the septic systems, and, and again. David, I'm gonna try to explain it, and if I'm wrong, jump in, but I'm gonna try to explain it in a little bit. Easier lay terms for, for someone that doesn't deal with septic systems every single day. Bonnie, what's happened is we have a lot of old Title V septic systems that haven't failed. And because those septic systems are not adding any new bedrooms. They don't have to upgrade unless they sell the property. So you've got a three bedroom house, for example, has a thousand gallon tank and a six foot leach pit. And it may only be. Seventy-five feet to somebody else's well.
Correct, yes.
But it was in existence and legal at the time. The people haven't expanded, they haven't, um, added any bedrooms. Uh, they haven't put it in addition. So it hasn't triggered Title V, the new Title V that says minimum septic tank is fifteen hundred. You can no longer have a leach pitch, you've gotta go to a leach field. You have to be a hundred feet away from your neighbors, to a neighbor's well, or you have variances galore.
And that, that's why I say, because of the variances, although they're legal. They don't meet the design criteria for functionality. So, we're kind of pretending, oh, it's a legal Title V. Yeah, that's a legality issue, but a functionality issue? It doesn't meet the standard, and we're already, and so we're gonna put more stuff on that standard and even further compromise it. So that's where I'm concerned with, cuz I don't need to have a thirty billion dollar wastewater system. In Wellfleet because we've overdeveloped, or an expanded water system because we've overdeveloped. You know, that's the problem. That's our regulation, is water. That's what we're stuck with. That's gonna, what's gonna drive the bus on this whole discussion.
And, and water and septic.
Yep.
Are really leading. The zoning, which we create. Um, it used to be that they couldn't do that. But because of the nineteen ninety-five regulations that the state put in across the state. For ten thousand. Feet per bedroom, it really has changed zoning in a lot of towns. And really has made Wellfleet's zoning in many places obsolete. You can't do a cottage colony the way we have it written today. You can't do a lot of things. So, I think that's what David was going for, Bonnie, so I.
Yeah.
Um, anybody else after David?
So.
Bonnie?
You wanna just poll people, right?
Well, I wanna get.
What's that?
I wanna get your ideas.
Jerry, you want us, our opinions on whether we're interested in pursuing this, right?
Yes, and why?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, I am. In favor of. Expanding year round rental housing in Wellfleet. If this is the best, if this is the kind of best way to do it, there is a question of, um. You know, I think I, I, I'm sorry I didn't put a, a header on what was in the meeting packet. It was just my thoughts about the questions we needed to address, but. I think that the concern we, that was raised the last time we discussed this, which was quite a while ago. Was to make sure that any ADU bylaw did not undercut the efforts to have more ADU. Dwellings, um, and I think that. I think that the, I think I would like to know, and I guess what's a question for Sharon. You know, cuz she said in her memo that they have a consulting services from community development partners. To kind of, I guess, and I guess maybe their role is to help. Examine, you know, how best to. Structure an ADU. Zoning bylaws so that it would actually work or have the right incentives in it. So I guess that's something I'd like to clarify, because if you actually have consultants who are able to. To gather some of the experience from neighboring towns and figured out why there's so few. You know, from the bylaws that those towns passed, and maybe make an improvement. I mean, I think that I'm, I'm just, I don't wanna give up on the goal of getting more year round rental housing. In Wellfleet, whether it's affordable or quote workforce, you know, which is what we talked about. As a, as a major need. So I think, um, if there's something in the bylaws that we can do. That will help pinpoint who's responsible for enforcing and what exactly gets enforced. In a simpler.
We can't do this.
Than the ADU one, I'd like to pursue that discussion, but I, I would like to know the role of the consultants that you mentioned.
Okay, Bonnie, I, I, I'll have Sharon dive in, but we can't. We have to leave the enforcement to those who enforce.
Yes, yes, but I, it's.
We can't pinpoint, we can't tell them what to do, um, the enforcing people have to, are the enforcing agency.
Yeah, yeah, but don't, don't bylaws specify who's responsible? Yeah, yeah, but don't, don't bylaws specify who's responsible for enforcing? They don't?
No, the enforcing agent of the zoning bylaws in the town of Wellfleet is the building inspector.
Oh, okay, good, that's clear.
If somebody has a problem with the building inspector, they would appeal to the Board of Appeals.
Got it.
That's the system for that. Sharon, did you want to answer Bonnie in any way?
You know, honestly, Elaine might be a better person to answer the CDP's role. Is Elaine still there?
Yep, she is.
Yeah, um, yes, I mean, with a CPA grant, Housing has contracted with the CDP for some housing specialist services. And they have been very active across the Lower Cape in looking at the A D U issue and putting together information. In fact, they provided the sort of chart that Sharon put in, in her packet. In a lot of these towns, the A D U bylaw is quite new, which is why there haven't been that many yet. We look at Brewster as having quite a bit of success with this so far. They have some by right and some by special permit. I mean, I think we heard last year you were concerned about by right. And so that, you know, we might not want to start out that way. We might, might want to make it by special permit to consider that. But the, but the CDP is committed to helping expand rental housing on, on the Lower Cape. And this is one of the tools to do it. So we are looking at other towns for successes, but it, that one is quite new. With the A A D U, we were successful with getting so many in the beginning because we did not deed restricted. Other towns deed restricted their A A D U's, and people did not want to have to deal with that. So we left our A A D U a little more open, which is what, what provided more of them. But
It is, Elaine, it, it, the A A D U is, and I'm not sure, maybe I'm talking about something different. The A A D U is deed restricted in Wellfleet because they have to get a special permit, and that special permit is on your deed.
And, and it's recorded at the registry.
It's recorded at the registry. So it is deed restricted.
But, but in perpetuity.
Right, right, it's not
Not in perpetuity, but
Different.
that's a management situation. And now you have to fall into the management situation of the two years if they don't use it. But it is a deed restriction that the unit was granted approval for living facilities to a particular group of people by special permit, and it is on the deed.
The registry doesn't remove that itself.
No.
It's, it's still on file at the registry. However screwed up Town Hall may be, that's still on the registry file. That didn't go away.
So I don't know, I would be interested to see, Elaine, how, as you said, some other towns have a deed restriction. I would be interested to see, and I'm sure some board members would be interested to see how that deed restriction differs from what we have.
Okay, we can certainly find that out.
So, and I think it would help clear up for you. Okay.
But in fact, the CDP was hoping to have a representative attend the meeting tonight to hear the discussion, and they were not able to do that. But they are committed to trying to bring information that could help.
And, and where you, okay. And where you're going with the A D U, and I want Elaine and Sharon kind of pointed at you two, whether it's special permit or by right, if A D U were to become a zoning bylaw, and there was a deed, or there was a restriction that it had to be year-round, that, it appears, is year-round to any year-round person from anywhere. Is, is that the way you're seeing it? It's not just a Wellfleet resident. You, they become a Wellfleet resident and living there, but it is literally an open situation where they could come out of Eastham, they could come out of Falmouth, they could, they could come out of Bridgewater, they could come out, they could come out of anywhere. Basically, it's a, it's an open situation. I'm reading that correctly.
Yes.
Right? Okay. Who else on the planning board wants to jump in? David did, Olga?
Having been an A A D U owner for more than fifteen years, I'm on my sixteenth year, I have not found, now granted, I'm an architect. I've worked in design and technical for mass housing. I know this stuff. And when I moved here, I said, I want an A A D U. It wasn't that hard. Without prompting, I bring my yearly information. And according to Justin Post, who some of you don't seem to like, you know, I went along with what needed to be done. And it bothers me that, about the enforcement, that that's not being done. I do think the A D U, A A D U law works. I don't see why we couldn't combine it with an A D U, one being affordable and the other not, and keep it parallel. And I want to add that the income requirements and the rents are not, the rentals, two of my three rentals who were more than fourteen years, the two people, could not afford what is the market rate. They said, this is not affordable. The market rate is quite high. It's forty percent, the fortieth percentile of what rents are. They each were paying me about three hundred dollars out of, you know, nine hundred or a thousand. So they said, you know, because they were Section Eight. So most people can't even afford that rent that we prescribe as the threshold. Granted, it doesn't, didn't cover all my expenses, but I liked having somebody nearby. So I'm just saying, oh, I guess one more thing is that enforcement means that you have standards of health and safety in every unit. We're going around saying, we're not going to look, but there are hazards that we are allowing to continue. And I'm not sure that's a position the town should take. So I think the A D U and the A A D U can work together. I think the thresholds for income and rent are pretty high, that we don't need to worry about A D U's somehow being better. It's going to be hard to find people year-round who can afford even the threshold. Those, that's my two cents.
Did you get your tax breaks, Olga?
Excuse me?
Did you, were you able to get, yes, were you able to get those easily? And without a problem? Because that's what I want to hear, you know?
Yes, absolutely. And mine is, and everyone's, should be based on the square footage of your apartment that you're renting, as opposed to the complete. It's not a thirty percent, I kept hearing thirty percent. That's not a given.
So did you get reasonable ones, and were you giving them easily?
I have a five hundred square foot unit in a fifteen hundred square foot house. So thirty percent, thirty-three, I think I get thirty percent, but
Okay, so you did good, and that worked, right? That's what I want to hear, get, get it worked.
While we're talking about my experience, day one, I got a loan for fifteen, a loan of fifty-five thousand dollars to create my unit as long as I rented for a, for continually for fifteen years.
That's what I want to hear.
And it was only because of that, I'm going to lose it all. It wasn't in pieces. You don't make it to fifteen years, you lose fifteen, you, your loan is, you have to pay it back. Otherwise, it's forgiven.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, those are great programs, and, yeah.
My experience is terrific, but I think that people don't want to do it because they don't want their houses inspected. And I know that I had mine, you know, up to snuff, but HUD came in with their inspectors once a year. And I passed.
And that wasn't invasive, right? No.
I, I mean, people would think that, but not for me.
Okay.
Well, good, yeah.
Any, any other hands, members? Alfred, you're quiet.
I want to see the paperwork from Sharon.
Okay.
Because other than that, all we can do is go around in circles.
All right. David Mead?
Yes.
I'm, I'm with Alfred. I want to see the paperwork. It would be great to get that, the draft materials and any other information from other towns. And we can go at this in more detail once we have some, some more to look at. If that's our next meeting, that's great, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
However, we need to have it before the meeting, not the night of, so we can actually absorb it, please.
Yep, Sharon?
If it, if it goes in your packet, don't you get it before the meeting?
A week before.
As long as you get it in the packet, yes, that's, I'm not complaining, I'm just making a statement.
Oh, of course, that's a given, I think.
I, it would, I'll tell you, Sharon, yes, if you get it in before noon on a Thursday for the following meeting, our next meeting will be in November. No, next meeting will be
No, the next meeting will be in December.
Do you have a date?
Not yet, they're going to decide that by the end of the meeting, and then I'll send it out, and I'll send out an invitation like I did last time with
Perfect.
just as long as you have everything to me by the noon on a Thursday before the meeting, it'll get in the packet.
Okay.
Well, I, I would like to see, if possible, I, I think it's going to be probably the first week of December somewhere. It's got to be the first week of December somewhere. Instead of getting it to us on that twelve o'clock deadline on a Thursday, if you can get it in even earlier, the sooner you can get it in, Rebecca can put a copy in the packet, but she can also email that copy. Am I correct, Rebecca? Rebecca?
I didn't forget you, you're right. Yes, I was looking at your next meeting date.
Can't do two things at once, I understand.
Yep, I, I know, I realize that. So, yes, as long as it's to me, I can email it to everybody, and I can have hard copies for everyone. If you get it to me on time, I can have that packet done by four P M. on Thursday.
Okay, so just so you know, Sharon, that if you get it done on a, on a Monday of that week, if you get it into her, she can double it out, she can send it out, and she can get it in the packet.
And if you just email it to me, I can print anything you need printed. You don't have to print it, I can print it out for the board, for the, for the board.
Great, thank you.
Okay. With that, I think I'm going to move on.
Good, okay, and I'm going to say good night. Thank you. Good night.
All right, climate control. David Mead Fox?
Yes.
In this letter?
Yeah, thanks, Jerry. I, I want to say, not just because of the hour, but partly, some of the, I, to make everybody feel better, I think I originally had six or so items on my list. I appreciate the, you continuing to deal with it. Some of the things have been dealt with individually, and that's great. And I'm now down to three things instead of six. That's an improvement, right? So, what I wanted to ask Jerry is, given the hour, what I, there's only one that I'd like to focus on right now, which is the overall focus of the planning board, at least start that conversation. For me, I'm, I'm about out of steam. And then if we could possibly do it, put the specific climate change piece on the next agenda, ideally earlier in the agenda. I'm only asking for that not because of me, but because it's a very complicated issue. And I know we're going to have differences of opinion about it. And I, for one, can deal with any kind of difference, but I would love it if we could have it earlier, the climate change specific items on my list, earlier in the evening.
All right, David, I'll, I'll put it on. I'll try and get it on, but as you can see, we've got housing too. What I would like that I think would be helpful to members, and, and, you know, at least in my mind, you are right, David, I'm, I'm having some serious problems with them. I got to know where you're going.
Right, okay.
You know, subdivision control law is already taken care of.
Right.
We've got, so, some of the bullets that you're thinking where you're going will help some of the makers, make, I think will help some of the members make a decision on whether or not they even want to further discuss it after that, or whether
No, understood. And what I, what I've got my, my list down to is climate change, the idea, one, two, liaisons with other town committees and boards, and three, the overall focus of the planning board. And what I'm suggesting now is that I'd like to talk for a few minutes and have a discussion about our focus overall as a planning board, and defer the climate change issue until the December meeting.
Okay, so you, you want to, you want to look at the, tonight, the liaisons with the, with the other boards?
Well, if we get to it, but I, I wanted to start with the, the broader approach by the board, if I could take a few minutes on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, when I, I know we all know this, but, you know, the, the, what I start with is, is there a way, do we have an appetite? Do we have the authority to take a more proactive role about things that are going on and challenges facing the town, well beyond climate change issues? Do, can we do more that is proactive instead of reacting, which we have to do, obviously, to a subdivision proposal, et cetera? That's correct and good. But when I look at the basic charge in the charter, the town charter, we, it says, you know this, "The planning board shall make recommendations to the town meeting and to the town administrator on all matters," I emphasize that, "all matters concerning the physical, economic, and environmental development of the town." So, which is an unbelievably broad mandate, on at least looking at the meaning of the words. And I don't think we're ever going to have anywhere near the bandwidth to actually do all those things. But I just would love to hear from members, and anybody, Jerry, you want to talk about the legal parts of it, can't, do we want to do more proactively, and can?
Such as?
Such as, plant, help getting, this gets, is connected a little bit to the liaison piece, such as help the town, we don't have a town planner, okay? Help, help the town deal with issues, whether it be preserving historic structures, affordable housing, we're doing that, economic development, adaptation and, and mitigation regarding climate change, generally lowering our carbon footprint, there's a whole laundry list of schools. I'm just asking, I'm sorry to have it be conceptual. I know it's easier to think about a specific thing, but I'm just trying to get a sense, does the board want to, to be a little more forward leaning about reaching out to other groups in the town, in the select board, and having more of a, in a way, traditional planning role? I'm not, I'm not sure we can do all that, and I'm not sure we even want to, but it's a question.
Okay, anybody want to weigh in before I do?
Yeah, I think it's too broad of a subject. I think it's beyond our purview. I think we spent over a year on A D U's and A A D U's, and we've gotten little to nowhere. But that's a very important mandate, and how we tackle that. So I don't really want to step on any of the other toes because it's too broad of a mandate. It interferes with state codes as far as building, which I'm sure the state will fuck up anyhow, because they already have. So I don't want to add to that. So I don't want to add to that mess, and I don't think we're particularly qualified to make sweeping mandates that are likely to be both expensive and unmanageable. We, we can't even deal with what we got. Even a town planner, that's the biggest thing we, we haven't had, but do we really need one? I mean, town government has exploded in the last thirty years. Prohibitively expensive. That's the only growth industry in this town, is government. I don't want to add more layers to that. I think we should stay focused to what bylaws we can affect and change and improve, rather than go into a broad sweeping mandate.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah?
Bonnie?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I, this kind of goes to us, um, uh, what puzzled me when I first joined the planning board. Because I read the role of the planning board in the town charter. And the, the role is actually that of a, a, a longer term planning committee, you know, that, that deals with the, kinda, I can't, I can't quote it exactly, but it's like the, the economic and social and whatever, uh, matters of the town. David, maybe you can quote it more exactly, and so I was really-
Earlier, yeah.
Yeah, and so I was really puzzled when I, when I saw what the planning board actually does, or at least it did, and I think when I, at the point when I came on board, and I think Jerry and Alfred, you, you remember this really well, and Beth, you know, um, there, there was an incredible backlog of, like, really important, uh, and pressing subdivision, issues that needed to be dealt with. And so, I mean, I have some sympathy for what David's saying, simply because I sat for six months on the long-term comprehensive planning committee as the representative of the planning board. And that committee, as far as I can tell, has been disbanded. And yet, you know, there are these, uh, really important issues facing the town, which, you know, some of them have to do with climate change, like how on earth are we going to, if, if the planning board has to deal with land use, then how on earth are we going to plan medium term? You know, for sea level rise and all the water issues that are gonna come with that. You know, and so there is, I think I, I sympathize with David's, I mean, I'm in agreement. I, I don't want to just say sympathize. I'm in agreement with David's idea that the planning board maybe needs to take a more proactive, medium-term planning role, rather than just dealing with short-term issues as they come up. I, but I, I hear what, what David's saying, you know, about the, the, the very important issues that we need to make room for on our, on our agenda right now. So, I just want to say that, that in the, that if, if the function of the planning board really is what it says in the town charter, then we ought to be doing more kind of medium-term, you know, two, three, five-year planning than we are now. And I, that, that is, um, and that is a tall order. You know, but I, um, and, or maybe, yeah. So I, and I guess, um, I know that there are some things that by Massachusetts law, the planning boards have to do. But then, then there's also how the board was envisioned in the town charter, so.
Okay. Olga, did I see you?
Yeah, um, I, I think this is in the purview of the planning board to require more metrics on things. For instance, uh, the assessor's database perhaps should be more clear about the type of, uh, heating systems and, um, the fuel used and things like that. And I think that the town actually has requirements for the global covenant and other associations that we belong to or have signed on to. And as a planning board, maybe we can add requirements. I know people don't want to hear that there's more paperwork and so forth, but to really understand where we're going as far as, you know, you, a carbon footprint and all that, we could require certain information and data as we move along, as we get, um, developments to look at, or changing some of the zoning so that it's clear about you're helping or you're not helping, mitigate climate change. My two cents.
Okay, I, I see some problems with, with what you've, what avenues you're going down there, but I don't want to stop the conversation at this point. Anyone else? Alfred? Quiet.
Well, first of all, we have a stretch code, okay? So whatever's going in a house today, um, we're above a lot of the state because the whole state has, excepted the stretch code. So we are looking at things in the right avenue as far as that goes. And then, and if we want to plan for something, my personal opinion is building houses, low-income houses for people to live in, is only part of it. If they don't have a job, what's the sense of building them a house? So if you want to plan something for the future, figure out how to keep people employed. I mean, we're a tourist community. We want to make sure that we have housing for everybody, and we're gonna pay them six months and tell them the other six months they're gonna find the money. I mean, I don't think that's planning very well. I mean, if you want to go to, to the urban economic development part of all this, you know, I'm not as concerned about somebody's house today because, you know, I pulled permits recently, and I hate to tell you, there's a hell of a lot more to insulation value, windows, type of he- heating you use. So it, it's, we are going in the right direction without the planning board, because I'm not so sure we want to become the building inspector, I didn't say that correctly, become the agent in charge of the carbon footprint of the house.
Correct.
Um, and back to my other part is, you know, the planning board, if we really want to help our community, we need to figure out how, how to make a, I don't want to say industrial or commercial, or some zone that actually works instead of the ones we have, that there's no, no employment in.
Right.
I mean, we have a commercial district, which has failed, in my opinion, because we allow ho- homes in it. Why would you have a commercial district that you can have a gas station, a mechanic shop, a boat repair place? Um, you name what kind of, a welding shop, all these things, and between the two of them, there's a house. So when I come to work at 5:00 in the morning, the neighbor complains.
Because you can't work.
And I don't, and I, I don't, and I think the neighbor should complain, but the problem is, we're not separated. So until we have an industrial park, and I don't use the word industrial park to be, you know, nuclear power plant, I'm just saying that we've never actually worked at getting a tradesman's park in Wellfleet, and maybe that's something the planning board should take some time to look at.
Well, well, Alfred, we did, and it got shot down. It was Jack, uh-
Well-
Jack tried to do it over at the dump.
I'm gonna cut you off. Fifty percent of the people in this town would run him over. The other fifty percent loved him, so we need to find somebody that, that's got seventy-five percent of love.
There you go.
Alfred, that's hard to do in this town.
I don't disagree, Jerry, but when he tried that, he didn't do it as, as the planning board.
No, I, I, I agree. He, he did it on his own. He didn't come to the planning board.
That was a good idea.
Beth, Beth is trying to speak.
I am. So as superintendent of schools in my previous life, you did a lot of research and study on the demographics of Cape Cod. Um, and Wellfleet is no different than any other town on Cape Cod. Jobs are not really the issue. People come here to work from off Cape. The real issue is housing. And, and the generation that is coming up are not buying homes. They are not taking out mortgages. And they will not, because they already have a mortgage, which is called their college loan. And so the, the studies on the demographics are that unless we do something dramatic as towns, schools, towns, housing, to alter our demographics, we're doomed. Um, so that might be a way, that would be my perspective in terms of what David's saying, in terms of looking at the future, cooperating with other organizations and groups and, and experts in how to move us forward in a realistic way, considering that the Cape has nowhere to expand to. Anything, it's going to shrink. And it's certainly shrinking in people and in children.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's really our big issue. And how do we plan for that? And who do we work with on that? I, I, I'd be interested in that. I think that touches a bit on what you're talking about, David.
Yeah.
But, but on the other hand, it seems to me that that's more of a, of a comprehensive group. It's not the planning board's ownership. And, and if we own too much, we're gonna get shot down by the select board and, and all these other groups that aren't, that have equal, um, need and interest, uh, and, and won't want to be told what to do by the planning board.
Yeah, I, you know, I actually agree with you completely, Beth. I think that I'm, I'm really talking about, uh, picking, picking some things that are in the category of traditional, you know, as Bonnie says, medium-length planning, dealing with jobs, et cetera. And we're not gonna be able to do everything. That would be crazy. I'm not sure we have the bandwidth to do anything more than we're doing, honestly. I'm just bringing it up as an issue. Can we, do we want to add in, maybe it's just, um, maybe it's, we just go around economic development and jobs as an example. That would be tremendously valuable and really, really hard, but the, the point is to do something that is an actual forward-looking planning function. And I'm not naive. I know that we can't do all these things. That's impossible.
Impossible.
We can't become this mega-planning body for the whole town, of course, but we could do something.
Maybe we could start by learning. Because I don't think we're educated about this as a planning. It's hard enough to learn the zoning bylaws.
Right.
And, and to know about development and all these things that, we have some experts on the planning board for individual things, but you're talking about something we have no expert sitting on the board. So we all, we all need some education.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, okay. For some of you, I guess, don't remember. Some of you just have been here for a shorter time. We had a full-blown economic development committee in the town of Wellfleet, pointed by Selectman. It was going for three years. They were able to do nothing and finally disbanded. It's been tried.
And in other towns as well, not just Wellfleet, other towns as well, same outcome.
As far as liaisons go, none of the boards mentioned, Historic Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Building Department, Conservation, want any of our input as liaisons. Hackles get put up. And it's none of our business to get involved with telling the Board of Appeals what the zoning bylaws are. They are the enforcing agent. They make the decision for permits, and they do not like to be told what to do or how to read the bylaws, or how to interpret them. I've gone round and round with them. I've gone round and round with a number of chairmen on it, and they don't like that type of input.
Uh, Jerry, just so you know, that's not what I'm proposing at all.
Well, I, that's, when it says establish liaisons with Historic Committee, Zoning Board of Ap- we don't, they do not want liaisons. They don't want people at their meetings from the planning board. They don't want to be told what to, or even suggested.
I'm not sure that that's true. I've heard some other things. I don't, it's a matter of how we do it. Clearly, if we went in and told them how to do their job, that would be crazy and wouldn't work. I agree with that part. But if we went in as part of our, as a part of our planning function and asked them for their input to us about planning or problems facing the future of the town, for example, that's a collaborative effort. It's not stepping on their toes. It doesn't have to be onerous in any way. If we do it as, we're all on a team here, guys. Let's figure out how we're gonna be-
We are on a team, David, and if, if they need our help, the olive branch has always been open, but it's not some way, something that is used or I, I really want to take up any more time on. There are things that I can't discuss at the present time that may happen in the future, where maybe these boards will get together with one representative and, and help get a better communication.
That's, that makes me, one member of each board getting together on a regular basis and having conversations
Right.
with a town administrator.
That is-
Your approach.
That is a approach that's being entertained, maybe not at the forefront, but it's being entertained. So I think that is much more valuable than what you're proposing.
Well, that's, that's-
Or suggestion.
No, that's actually an example of what I'm proposing.
Okay. The town has acted in the past on a number of issues that we brought to Selectman, parking, buy property, so on and so forth. It, quite frankly, has fallen on deaf ears. We wouldn't have parking problems that we have today if the park, if the town of Selectman had listened to us in the past. We wouldn't have the pier filled up with charter buses using up parking for everybody else if they had listened to us in the past. So, maybe, maybe it's me, David, that has been on so long that occasionally I just get a little frustrated and tired with bringing up all these subjects to the upper management team and just get thrown away. So we stick to, we tend to stick to what we do and try to anticipate zoning problems. And when we see a problem raising its ugly head, then we work on it and correct it. There's three members, actually, there's four members right now, that haven't seen when we all of a sudden get into, um, which we probably will do or may do on ADU, but when we've gotten into some zoning bylaws that we have torn apart and worked months on end on, it takes a lot of time, a lot of energy.
And then-
That would go to 10:00 at night, time and time and time again. We haven't had those issues at the present time. They will rear their head again. When they do, we'll get into them. But for most part, Wellfleet is, from what I can see, we, as previous planning members, and I think as present planning ma- members, have made Wellfleet a place where people want to come. We've preserved it. We've taken care of it. We've watched our zoning. It hasn't gotten out of hand. And consequently, the better you make it, the more they come, and the more they come, the more they spend money.
Right.
On housing and everything else. And I think if you look at the town of Wellfleet with the amount of conservation, with the amount of housing, with the amount of tax revenue coming in from non-taxpayers, we really have done a pretty damn good job of planning and making things work in the town of Wellfleet. we really have done a pretty damn good job of planning and making things work in the town of Wellfleet.
Jerry, I actually agree that a lot of things have gone really well. I'm not looking backwards. I'm not criticizing the past.
Oh, I understand.
Looking forward.
Yeah, and I understand. And we've, the planning board has looked forward. And that's one of the reasons why it didn't go out of sight every time that's, the market went up. Every 10 years it goes down and then it goes back up again. And as it goes up, we've stayed and shown across the Cape as one of the better towns where people want to come. We've planned accordingly. We've tried to nip stuff in the bud. And I think we've been fairly successful. That's not to say that we should put blinders on and not look to the future. We do, but there's only so much we can do. An hour and a half or two hours at the present time, especially on Zoom meetings.
Well, Jerry, I agree with, I agree with that. And part of my concern, just to finish if I could, is that I, it might sound strange, but I'm, I'm raising this as an issue. I'm not act, at all sure that it's even doable. I've said that a couple of times. I understand how little bandwidth we have individually and collectively. To Beth's point, all the things we don't know, I get all that. And so it may be something we just can't do, but I wanted to raise the issue, that's all. I appreciate the, the board discussing it about can we do anything else proactively, more forward-leaning, medium-term planning? That's all. And maybe we can't.
Well, I, I, I think, David, you never close the door totally, but for example, some of this climate control stuff, um, probably when, I'll go back to when we created the, um, uh, come on Alfred, help me out. David, help me out. The, um, Conservation, um, when we worked with Conservation and got the-
Well, some of the, some of the subdivisions, there's an elevation already for, for, um, roads and that stuff. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about creating the, um, the district. Um, where, um-
Which one?
Oh.
The overlay district?
No, yeah, Wetlands Protection Act.
Oh, yeah, well, that's-
We gave to, we, we were the zoning, it's, it's in the zoning book, but we, we let the Conservation Committee basically draw it. We said, listen, we got a problem. Look into it, please, and report back to the planning board. They did, created the wetlands. We got it through as a zoning bylaw. So some of those things, we've got to look to other people within the town to say, hey, maybe we, you need to look at something. And if it needs to be a bylaw, zoning bylaw, send it back to us. But you're the department that should look at it. If it's something the town should look at as far as a general bylaw, then the Selectman should look at it and see if they'll get it in as a zoning bylaw. Those are kind of one of the ways that we can do it as a planning board and not take on it ourselves, but maybe feed it to the right person or agency that should be looking at it.
Well, and that's what I'm talking about, a meeting anyway, by the liaison idea, that we've somehow put a system in place where we can, we can suggest things, propose things, uh, talk with other groups, you know, again, on the team model. And each group has its own area of responsibility and knowledge, for sure. But maybe there's a little bit more of a facilitative role that we can take, not directive, not being bossy, but facilitative.
Okay. Um, good. Can we move on? You're gonna get that?
I guess, yeah, I'm happy to move on, but I, it's sort of, we're, we're sort of left at hanging. I'm not, I'm not gonna, I have no motion in mind or anything, but, and I appreciate that everybody spoke, but I, I came up with a sort of in a general sense of three or four yeses, three or four maybes, nos, and I just still don't have a collective sense. Maybe there isn't one for the, the board as a whole.
I think the collective sense is that you were gonna work on one bullet for next, for the next meeting.
Oh, no, for sure. I'm talking about this, what we've been talking about the last half an hour or so.
Get by the first bullet, David.
Sorry?
Get by the first bullet. Get by what you're gonna put on the agenda for climate control or something for the next meeting.
Right, I understand.
See how that goes, and then we'll bring up, we'll discuss a nu- next bullet at a further meeting. Rather than all the broad stuff that you've already gone to, we've got to narrow it down to a bullet at a particular meeting.
Okay.
Okay? So I think you said you wanted to get on the agenda for the next meeting, kind of upfront.
Right.
So if you would, get to Rebecca and myself before that Thursday
Yep.
with an idea of some of those facts and what you want to get in.
Yeah, and that'll be climate change specific.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, all right, what have I missed on agenda?
Bike trail.
Uh, I'm sorry?
The bike trail.
Yeah. What I've got on this is-
The bike trail.
Yeah, I know. Um, basically you got some maps, right? You saw some information.
Little, little to none.
Well, you know, David, the, I got something from Courtney sent to me. It was 56 pages going all the way back to when this thing started and most of that-
Well, I didn't get any of that.
Um,
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I think-
I gave it to you, David, but it was unfortunately, it just had a bunch of links to the town website.
Oh, I'm not taking that down, yeah.
I know, I know. And I, I'll print it for you if you want it. Just let me know.
Okay, yeah, I'll let you know on it.
Could I speak?
Yeah, Bonnie.
Oh.
Yes, Bonnie.
Yeah, the links did not work, Rebecca. It was in a PDF and you couldn't click on them. And so it was actually really hard.
So for the future, all you have to do is go to the town website and it should be on there and it will say, and I can actually give you, I'll send you an email tomorrow with direct links of where it goes. Courtney and I've worked together and that's how we got them, but they are on the town website. Because there's about 145 pages.
Yeah, right.
All right, but what we're focusing on, at least I believe what we're focusing on, is basically the entrance at Commercial Street and, I mean, um, Main Street and Route 6 coming into the Wicket.
Hmm.
From what I can see from the map, and I've asked Rebecca to see if she can get a blow-up map from DOT. Um, and I happened to have caught driving by the other day, the DPW two members, actually the top two. Would surprise the hell out of me.
They weren't working, were they?
They're in Wellfleet?
Uh, they were in Wellfleet together, standing next to each other, um.
Holding a shovel?
Let's be careful here.
Uh, standing next to each other with the police chief, fire chief, and the two DPW. And they were standing in the wicked parking lot.
Yeah.
I went by, kept going, and said, Jerry, don't go there. You weren't invited. Kept going, hit the traffic light, took a right. And Jerry made a U-turn at PJ's parking lot, went back.
Of course.
And, uh-
No surprise.
Yeah, I, I said, gentlemen, um, I am assuming that you're not here talking about the bike trail. And if you're not, then it's none of my business. I don't want to be part of the conversation and I'm, I'm not invited myself, but I am giving you a heads up that the planning board has been instructed and requested by the Select Board to look at the bike trail coming into Wellfleet from Route 6 and ending at the Wicket. And so I want you guys to let you know that the planning board is going to be discussing it. We're gonna come up with some ideas. But it was at the direction of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm sure the information will be passed off to you, but if it's not, just give me a holler and we'll make sure we get it. I wanted to touch bases. I was promptly corrected and said, well, no, the bike trail's not coming through. It's just a sidewalk. But yeah, it's a good idea to connect it. So I did check it, and they were absolutely right. It is not a bike trail like on Route 6, which is only five feet wide or three feet wide. And then a sidewalk, which is 10 feet wide. They're proposing a six-foot-wide sidewalk from Route 6 at the crosswalk and traffic lights to the Wicket. Six feet wide. So, yeah, pedestrians will be on it, but you know darn well bikes are gonna be on it. So that's what, at least what I have that I got from the map. So I thought I would share that with, with you guys and, and, and we will get a, a, a larger map. Um, David Ral did, and David made a re, got ahold of me and said he did get ahold of, um, Oliver, uh, Steve Oliver. And, um, yes, they are working with National Seashore. They're working with, trying to do something with bringing the trail down the bike, uh, down the, um,
Yeah, according to Steve, that the DCR has, has agreed to at least stop it at the campground and not push it further than that at the moment. And that's as far as they'll carry it. It hasn't been written in stone that they're gonna carry it to the Emsler property from there. So they've, that's what I gathered out of the conversation, is that they're gonna bring it to the campground and then the game's still on where it could go. It ain't over yet. So it's not written in stone it's gonna come out at Route 6. So that's still possibly on the table that it won't. So I gotta find out a little bit more about that. But that's from Steve. That was his impression that not necessarily written in stone it's coming out in Route 6 yet. They might alter that. So.
My, my take on it, quite honestly, is that we should proceed, and I think we can probably proceed with it fairly quickly in the future. It doesn't have to be done tonight because I think we've all gone long enough. Um, that we stick with at this moment in time, Route 6 to the Wicket, and what happens if
That happens, yeah, yeah.
Should we make, should we make a recommendation, for example, to the Board of Selectmen that we continue that width of six feet right to uh, Long Pond Road, at which point they can pick up the existing sidewalk or they can come into town, but at least connect it. Um, I got a favorable nod from, from all parties that were talked with, was at the Wicket that day without anything formal that, gee, yes, that makes sense. But I think if we look at that aspect right now, I think that's the best thing we can do. I appreciate what Steve Oliver is doing. I, I think DCR has probably made that statement. I assume they made that statement. They'll, they'll plan on ending it at this moment in time at, at the Payne's Campground. But DCR job is done when they bring it to the Emsler. And my feeling is once they start the Route 6 project of the traffic light intersection.
Yeah, oh yeah, they're gonna want to wrap it up quickly.
They're gonna want to wrap it up. And the reason they're gonna want to wrap it up, quite honestly, is now secondary to, and more, just as important, is at the last meeting, I think I told you, we were notified that DOT will be repaving from routes, uh, from the drive-in theater all the way to the Turo line. So once, once DOT finishes the traffic light at Route, at Main Street and Route 6 in front of Outer Cape, Mid Cape, I mean, um, PJ's and Camerons, then in fact, the pavement follows the fur- next year. They're not gonna want to go back and do a rail, a rail trail or a, or a buffer or a sidewalk. They're gonna want to do it all one time. So if nothing happens in the very near future and, and they start construction, I'm sure maybe because of COVID, it's been delayed at least a little bit. I haven't heard yet, but I think once that ball starts rolling, it's not gonna stop. If, if they can come to some discussion, a mutual agreement, fine, but there's, there's private property underneath the power lines. There's a lot of stuff that's, that's gonna happen there that I'm, I'm not too sure what's gonna happen. But I will get this on the next agenda and hopefully we'll have a map, so.
That'd be nice. A map would be nice, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm looking, if you get us, if you get a map, which I hopefully will have sent out to each one of you for the next meeting, it will not be the entire bike trail because it's just too massive. It will be just-
Oh, yeah, no, 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 it's just-
Into the Wicket so you can see what they are planning and where they're planning. Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So any questions on that? Seeing none. Um, minutes. Any revisions, changes? Corrections? From the last meeting?
Um,
I'll go first.
No.
Wait, I fell, Bonnie? I'll go.
Was I the first?
Yep.
I would like to see the, the number of the street on the various places where it appears, like 20 Briar Lane and I guess 70 Rowell Road. Maybe that's only one spot, but, um, in the first one on Rowell Road, uh, Dyer Pond is, I believe, D Y E R.
Yep.
And it would help. I think we should say no action taken. Isn't that essentially what happened? You can read through this and you don't know what happened.
The only time you would ever know if something happened is if it's in bold lettering saying who made the motion and how it passed.
Okay.
Just like, um, I'll go, if you look down at the next bullet, meeting minutes.
Yep.
You see Packard moved to approve. If nothing is done, then there was, it was just discussion.
Got it. Okay. That's all I have to say.
Okay, and Bonnie, you cut to add the word 20? I'm sorry, no. Um, Rebecca, you cut the word, add 20 to Briar Lane.
It's in the public documents at the bottom as well, like Rowell Road, Briar Lane.
Okay, I didn't see Briar Lane had a number on any of the things that were given to me, so I will absolutely add that.
Okay. Bonnie?
This is really brief. I just want to say that I walked the trail, uh, through, uh, 70 Rowell Road over last weekend. And it's a very traveled, very visible trail. The map said it was overgrown and it's not at all overgrown. So it's just a point of information.
Showing it on the map.
Excuse me?
Showing it on the map.
Right, it shows the path on the map, but there's a line, there's a, there was a thing on the map that made it look like it was gonna be really hard to find the beginning of that trail, of the trail because it said it was all, all overgrown. And it's not. It's not at all. It's a, it's a, it's a, I just wanna, and maybe I should have done this in announcements. I just, you should tell me what the proper way to bring this is, but I did walk-
What you can, what you can do is you can't discuss the plan because it's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
What you can do is if there was a correction in the minutes on something we discussed at that meeting, then you can, we can discuss that change, just like we did just now with Og.
Okay, so I guess I don't have to- I guess I don't have to bring anything up then until it comes up again to the board.
Yep. Right.
Okay, thank you.
And it was 20 Briar Lane?
Yes.
Okay, I've put the map and parcel in there as well and changed the word, uh, spelling of Dyer Pond.
Okay, any other changes of minutes? Anyone want to make a motion? As amended?
I'll move to accept the minutes as amended.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
David, you vote?
Yeah.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Any new business? No.
Is Cam the man?
I'm sorry?
Is Cam the man? Do we need a new quarterback?
No, he's the man.
He's the man.
All right, that's what I want to hear.
Until he loses three in a row.
No, no, no.
Next three in a row.
No, no, no.
Okay, next meeting?
You can do December 2nd, December 9th, or December 16th. If you go two weeks, it's December 9th, I think if my calculations are correct.
Yep.
The second.
Yep, it's the second. You only did tonight for me because I have two meetings back to back tomorrow night, usually on a Wednesday. So you would be December 2nd if you go two weeks.
Oh, so let's do that.
It would, so the question would be, are we gonna have two meetings in December? We would have to do the second, I think.
And if you only decide to have one, you could do the ninth. Totally up to you guys. And Olga, actually, while we're on this, if you get a chance to go through those meeting minutes that we talked about, send them to me and I, I can amend them. I found out that I'm able to amend them and I would really appreciate it.
All right, well, I'm looking at this then. Alfred? Still there?
Yeah, yeah.
You.
He flew to Puerto Rico.
You were heading south?
He's in Puerto Rico.
Yeah, well, that was where I was, that's where I was going. Are you headed in south in January?
Don't know.
Okay. I'm not headed to any of the shows this year.
Uh, COVID, hashtag 2020.
Yep.
I'm not going to Key, I'm not going to Key West, but I think I'm still going to Puerto Rico, but I don't know when.
That surprises me.
I'm going to Orleans next week.
If you get lost, call me.
I will.
I'm going nowhere.
To Brewster.
All right, does the board, does the board want to meet twice or once in December? Bonnie?
Well, my guess is that we should, because we've been, you know, not meeting for so long and we're if we're gonna have both the ADU and some climate change stuff on the agenda, I think, I think we should meet twice. That's just my preference.
Anybody else?
I'll go with that.
Making shorter meetings?
I'll go with that, too.
Seven, well, seven to nine is usually what we do, right? Why we try.
You know, I'm, I'm chuckling because one minute everybody, people are thinking, oh, we want to take on and get stuff done. And the next meeting is you can't get a lot of stuff done in two hours in planning board. We beat stuff up, but I'm just chuckling. I'm used to meetings that start at seven and don't get out till about 10:15.
Yeah.
You guys are lucky. Let's see, let's see. How about the second and the 16th?
Right with me.
That keeps it away from Christmas week.
Good with me.
Early in the month. I know it will, there'll go one, two. That will give us three weeks after that 16th, before January 6th for the first meeting. It gets back for the first and third Wednesday.
Yeah.
And if we find that for some reason on the second that we plow through a lot of stuff and the decision is you want to cancel the 16th, we always can. Is that okay with members?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I got that.
How do we do a snow meeting? How do we do a snow meeting on Zoom? We can't do that, right? We can't cancel.
Welcome to Zoom, Mr. Pink. You can do any meeting on Zoom. It's no canceling.
No canceling at Zoom meeting, David.
No more snow days.
No more snow days.
No.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night, what's left of it, and we'll see you at least on the second.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Hi, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
I got, I got you, Jerry. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, on behalf of the chair.
All right.
May you all keep it fairly small and fairly quiet.
That's it.
Bye, everyone.
Bye bye.